The first one we have on our sheet here is the Chittenden Select Board.
That would be me.
Being V. Gina, okay.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Gina Odeboni. Thank you in advance for putting me on your agenda and allowing me to speak to you tonight. So I am here in my capacity as a Select Board member representing the town of Chittenden. As you all know, Proctor Town Forest is in the town of Chittenden. So it's a special place for all of us. In many ways, it's a community resource, and I think it's a special place for all Vermonters as well. So, you know, it is a place for birders and foragers and hunters, for day hikers and through hikers, for snowmobilers, and even for historians. There are a couple of historic charcoal kilns on the property. They have some significant value in terms of Vermont's history. There's also a really interesting ecological resource, Boiling Spring, which if you haven't been to it, do yourself a favor, and maybe not right now, you know, wait until the summer, wait until the thaw and hike up there. It's a really interesting natural feature. Of course, there are timber resources, as you know, there's flora and fauna, and then there are the water resources, which sustained Proctor for many years. In addition, those water resources, and I know you know all this, but I would just sort of want to share what it means to us. There are, there's some of, that water flows into Kiln Brook, into Furnace Brook, some of the best fishing in the state. About a mile and a half down the road, Furnace Brook goes right into the Fish Hatchery. And then, of course, those waters flow out into Otter Creek and into Lake Champlain. So this is land that has communal value, recreational value, ecological value, historical value, not just for the people of Chittenden or the people of Proctor, but for everybody nearby and really for all Vermonters. I am here tonight to tell you that I understand, as a Select Board member, the need to balance the budget and to find money without raising taxes. So if you want to sell that land, we understand that. We would just like to ask that, you know, this all came up fairly suddenly, that maybe given these concerns, if you will give a little thought to them and work with us to try to find a solution that will get you the money you need if you decide to sell it, but also protect some of these longstanding, you know, it's been a space that's been utilized by community members for many, many years. And so we have an interest in protecting that and in protecting the watershed, in protecting the historic resources. To that end, we've been talking to Kate Warner, who I, with your permission, I would like to give the rest of my time to her. She is an expert from Trust for Public Land, and she has put together some options for you, other than an outright sale to a private owner, just so you can think about them. And, you know, again, we would love to find a solution that works for you and hopefully that would also work for the community members and all Vermonters.
Does anyone have any questions for Gina right now?
Thank you for coming down.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for having me, and I'll turn it over to Kate.
Sure, thank you.
Hi, so I'm a project manager with the Trust for Public Land. We are a national conservation organization that works with communities, the state, and the federal government to conserve land that's important to them. So we've worked with Green Mountain National Forest over the last 20 years on conserving more than 30,000 acres by adding it to the Green Mountain National Forest. Right now, I'm involved in three separate projects with them. One you may have heard of in Chittenden, Killington, and Mendon, adding about 2,700 acres to the national forest called Ralston Rest around South Pond above Chittenden Reservoir, as well as another in holding in Lincoln and Warren, and one down in Wallenford. And Green Mountain National Forest is very interested in this property. They're interested in owning this property, and we'd be willing to work with you and with them to buy it from you. It does take a couple of years to make that happen, but I'd be happy to, you know, delve deeper into the details of how we would make that happen if this is something that the Select Board would consider, because that would not only, you know, get you fair market value for the property as determined by an appraisal, but would also protect the public benefits that this property has been providing for the last 80 years. One of the things that both Green Mountain National Forest and the Trust for Public Land particularly are interested in about this property is the fact that it has the Long Trail National Recreation Trail going through it, as well as the Catamount Trail, the statewide system for cross-country skiing. And it's very unlikely the Catamount Trail would be able to find a new spot if the property were sold privately and the new landowner would shut off public access, which he would have all right to do. So I've put together some details about a sale to Green Mountain National Forest. I also provided some information about five other conservation options. Both the Select Board, myself, and Green Mountain National Forest, as well as Vermont Land Trust, all think the best conservation option and outcome for this property would be in addition to Green Mountain National Forest. I also think it'd be the best for the town of Proctor in terms of getting you full fair market value for the property. But there are also other options, including potentially Chittenden owning the property as a town forest, restricting the property with an easement before you put it on the market or sell it to a private entity with either an easement with Vermont Land Trust or an easement with the state through the Forest Legacy Program, or donating an easement to either Vermont Land Trust or the state before selling it to a private entity. So addition to Green Mountain National Forest, at a minimum would take three years, but I understand kind of, you know, you're still mulling over kind of whether you even want to sell it at all, and we're happy to engage with you either now or two years from now or 10 years from now if you decide to sell it. And the price would be based on an independent appraisal that determines fair market value, and they would do a full timber crews at the time too, and how that incorporated into the price.
Great, well, no, we certainly would be interested.
I'm happy to come and meet with all of you again to get down into the details of what that could look like, and I'm also happy to answer any questions now about potential national forest ownership.
I guess, Mike, I have a question. I'm just curious if the town of Chittenden or you, the trust, has contacted the potential owner just to see what their plans are, or if there's something that you yourselves could negotiate if the property were sold to that person as far as an easement.
We are happy to work with a private owner about an easement. I think that it is dangerous for the town to sell to a private owner without restrictions in place already, without some legal commitment ahead of time. You know, they can not move forward with any verbal commitment to allow the public or to continue to maintain it as forest. You know, this property is considered by Vermont Conservation Design, which was completed by Vermont Fish and Wildlife in 2015 to be one of the highest priority interior forest blocks. Because it is surrounded by Green Mountain National Forest, any kind of fragmentation of that property through development or wind towers or even kind of, kind of very significant logging could impact the larger forest. So I think that it would be much better to restrict it before or otherwise have some sort of legal agreement before that happens.
And just to answer the other part of your question, the town of Chittenden has not contacted Mr. Gerlach. Time certainly has been an issue, but also he's been working through his lawyer, who did come to our Select Board meeting last night, so we did ask him some questions, but no.
Because my concern is, like, even if you put restrictions on it or a covenant saying, you know, this is what you do with the land, that down the road, the purchaser can basically say, "I want that removed," and oftentimes it is removed, so it doesn't really play a...
Well, a permanent conservation easement cannot be removed. Permanent conservation easement stays with the land and is recorded in the...
Right, the easement piece, but I'm saying like a restriction, like say we restrict them from putting up solar, you know, or putting up windmills, that they can actually move later to say, "We want these restrictions moved," and most chances are, they will be removed.
Which is why I recommend permanent public ownership or a permanent conservation easement prior to sale to a private entity.
Any other questions for these two gals? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess just take a, yes.
We're from Rutland County, and we have concerns also. Could we go ahead this portion? We seem to make more sense than we would go on.
Excuse me, did you, are you some like...
Yes, yeah.
Well, I'm just asking, you can speak, may I speak?
Sure, yes.
There are three of us, so hold on to your speaker.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Guinness from Rutland County, Audubon, and the three of us are here from Rutland County, Audubon. You may not know, but, excuse me, our mission is to preserve and protect birds and their habitats, as well as other wildlife that are part of the ecosystem of the birds. So we want to thank Proctor for their good stewardship of the parcel of land, which is a watershed and vital to both nesting and migrating birds, and we want to thank you for allowing us to speak here tonight. For over five years, we've been monitoring an acreage adjoining the parcel in question, and we have identified 69 species of birds there. Those include the wood and hermit thrush, which many people really love and which are in decline, and many beautiful wood warblers, which travel thousands of miles to nest there. This number also includes 10 of the 12 birders dozen, which are birds that Audubon has identified as being in decline, and 16 of the 40 birds of responsibility for Audubon, which are birds of concern but not yet in serious decline. We would assume that the acreage in question is habitat for that many species, meaning 69 or more, and if not more, and it being a watershed, it's very important to provide fresh and clean water for the birds there. So to sum up, our concern is that this vital watershed area be preserved and not disturbed. If it's to be sold, there would need to be restrictions on it that we've already spoken of, and for birds and other wildlife. Thank you. Here are two other members from Audubon to speak their concerns.
Hey there. So as a long-distance through hiker, I can speak to the importance of solitude within interior habitat zones. It seems appropriate to maintain current conservation of this parcel and preserve the wilderness experience that many tourists, hunters, and nature lovers alike seek, and it would also maintain habitat connectivity when many areas grow increasingly fragmented and impacted. I hiked the long trail this fall, passing through Mount Carmel State Forest, which abuts this zone. I recall a rich forest of abundant bee-filled asters and piles of moose pellets along the path.
Did you state your name?
Name?
Oh, my name's Anya.
Hello, my name is Joel Tilly. I live in Poltonee, and I'm a longtime member of the Green Mountain Club and the Catamount Trail Association, as well as Audubon. These groups are dedicated to conserving land for wildlife habitat, public recreation, hunting, fishing, forest management. I've skied and hiked and birded in this area, protecting the birds and their habitat. It's very important to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, want to show a hand, any, okay, Justin Lindholm, yes.
I'm Justin Lindholm from Mendon. You can call me Don Keody, because I'm always thrusting against wind turbines, and I've worked for 10 years now for, to try to stop irresponsible renewable energy. Now, that does not mean I want to stop renewable energy. I am all in favor of most solar and some wind, smaller wind I love, not a problem, but industrial wind is massively destructive. It's always up on the ridge lines in Vermont. Other states, it's not. Other states, it's on flat plains. They don't have to blast at all. Some property I own over in Leampton, New Hampshire, they bragged about using 1 million pounds to blast that mountain down for just 12 wind turbines. Lowell Mountain won't even tell us what they used. That's how bad it is. Now, I'm concerned about being in this investigation of wind turbine sites before and after they're constructed, I've got a good feel for where they can be, and it is a very viable spot up on your high ridge, on the top of your 1,600 acres. This area, why it's so viable is because it has the perfect elevation of 2,000 to 2,100 feet. When you're up at that elevation, you can get the wind, but you're not too high to freeze up the blades on the wind turbines. So they like to keep an elevation down like that, but it's still high. The wind can be grabbed from the south, the southwest, the west, the northwest, and the north in that area. These are all the predominant winds in Vermont. Very rarely do winds come out of the east in Vermont. And these winds are unobstructed by any mountains, all the way across Champlain Valley, basically on this piece of land you folks have up there. This ridge that I'm talking about, that is on your land, overlooks Chittenden Reservoir, which is the most beautiful scenic spot in Chittenden. It is one of the most beautiful scenic spots in the entire state of Vermont, and these things will be looming over. I have a place on Chittenden Reservoir, although I don't get to see that ridge. There were a whole flock of geese just landed at my camp, right in front of my camp on the water this evening, a little after 4:30, and they came from the north. Most likely, they would have come across that ridge. They get torn up by wind turbines, a lot of birds do. We have bald eagles in the area. We won't have to worry about the loons, because they don't take off too much inland, they stay on the water. But the bald eagles are flying all over the place, and this year we had two of those up there. They get chewed up by these things too, but that is, that's one of the problems. The others are erosion. I was just up on Lowell Mountain two weeks ago to check that turbine site out, owned by Green Mountain Power, lots of erosion up there. They can't seem to get a handle on it. This place, your water resource coming down, is going to be jeopardized by that also. Now, John Gerlich wants to buy this land. He would have easy access to build turbines up there, because he already owns the land next to it, and the road system is such that it goes all the way to his ridge, this long ridge that connects from the land he already has to the Proctor land ridge. So that is, that's a special worry for development. Now, he says, John Gerlich says, and Gerlich, I think he's probably a wonderful person. He says he wants this place for solitude for himself, quiet solitude. He can enjoy not having people intrude on him. Well, there are people on McKinley Road, Mountain Springs Road, Mountaintop, and Chittenden Reservoir, they also want quietude. They also want peace. And these wind turbines make a noise that is actually more than noise, it's a vibration. This vibration travels up to four miles. Anybody within a mile and a half is in deep trouble. Those people on those roads are going to suffer. Not everybody, but some people suffer, just like some people suffer from seasickness and some people don't. I never get seasick. I can roll around on a ship all day long, doesn't bother me a bit. So that's another thing that we have to worry about. What I would like to see happen, I know the town would want to get maximum dollar, you know, you owe it to your citizens to get a top dollar. I would like to see restrictions, and this would be, one of them could be a 60-foot elevation height for any building. That would be, I don't think your comparisons that you had this land appraised the last time it was appraised, your comparisons don't include wind turbine development. Usually, those comparisons, just other big pieces of forested property somewhere, the comparisons they use. So there should be nothing that would hurt the value of this land as it was last appraised or of any recent appraisal. The thing with the restrictions, it'll just prevent the turbines, or you could just say, "No turbines," in the deed going forward. Now, there's one other thing you could do, that is, these turbines, when you have a location that's really top-notch for turbines, that is worth a lot of money to a turbine developer. You could reserve those rights for your town, for your taxpayers, and that these rights, the turbine development rights, would be in conjunction with whatever landowner is there if you wanted to do it that way. That's if you're after maximum dollar, you could do it that way. I'm not one into maximum dollar. I sold a piece of land once, and I took a bath on it to make sure it was preserved. Sometimes you've got to step up to the plate in this world and just do what's right, even if it costs you a little bit of money, and I'm very proud that I was able to do that. In your town plan on page 66, you folks actually put it in bold type, the town of Proctor does not, and underline "not," does not support ridgeline wind towers. And I think it would be doing Chittenden a favor that we wouldn't have to battle these people. I think we would win against them if anything ever, and I'm not talking Mr. Gerlach should do it, but, you know, he could pass away and then somebody else would own the land, or he could sell it, and then we've got to deal with this in the future. Thank you for letting me speak. Any questions?
Do you know if he has any wind turbines on his property now?
Any what's?
Any wind turbines on his property now?
No, no.
So the assumption is that's what you think he's going to use the property for?
There's a huge difference between the small ones and those big ones.
Right, but I mean, is that your assumption? It seems like we haven't heard anything about that as far as being the use of the property.
No, it's from what I have noticed over the years, looking at these sites, you can pick them out pretty easy after a while.
His current property has a, he's been on it, has conservation easements on it.
Okay.
And his previous property he just bought has plenty of easements, which he agreed to, so he's not anti-easement. He did some with Mountaintop in, so he didn't have a problem with that.
Thank you. Yes, anyone else? Yes, Mr. Mueb.
I thought I would wait till everybody else spoke.
Sure.
So if there's anybody else who is planning to speak, I would like to wait till everybody sort of spoke.
Anybody else that wants to speak on this particular subject?
Sue, I have questions, but my questions are more specific to the Select Board.
Yes, please.
Would the Select Board be considering selling the property if this proposal hadn't come forward from Mr. Galish?
Gerlach.
Gerlach, I'm sorry. Was that something that the Select Board was considering?
I don't remember talking about it.
No.
So the Chittenden Select Board member mentioned the budget and reductions or balancing the budget. Has the Select Board looked into how the revenues from this money can be invested or spent? This is watershed money. When we harvest, the revenues can only go for the water, so is it the belief of the Select Board that this money can be used for general funds?
We haven't discussed that at all.
When will these questions be answered before we continue down this path? I mean, these are questions as a Proctor resident that I find just as important as the concerns that the Chittenden, Mendon, Audubon have. This is something that, we pay $4,000 a year in taxes to have that property. Has a cost analysis been done yet of what it is from harvesting versus what it would be to invest these funds? Because we're not, I, my fear is that, you know, we live in the moment, and he says 1.5, and everyone's very excited about that number, but we also have the responsibility to think about those that come behind us, and that's why the property sets are today, because those that came before you maintained the property, the property sets in current use, there is a harvest plan, timber plan in place, funds come forward, they can be used for projects, they can be used to pay down the bond, they can be used to make improvements in the water department. So without any of these questions being investigated or the answers brought forward, so this is, you know, the third meeting, and we still don't have those answers, this, while they're concerned, these are bigger concerns for me.
So Stan, correct me if you're wrong, but didn't we ask Alan that exact question as to what the revenue could be used for if we did sell the land?
Right. Right now, at the auditors, the land is listed as an asset for the water department. The question comes up as to how you could change that. You just change it. As far as the audit is concerned, you could move that asset to something else from an audit standpoint.
Yeah.
From a legal standpoint, whether you would need a vote to move it to someplace else or not, that might be an advisable thing to do.
So I apologize. I thought that was a question that was asked to Alan in our last meeting. So can we ask him that and find that out? Because at least I thought that question had been asked, to be honest with you.
And we did. I think we had a discussion about it, because it was partially, basically, once the sale takes place, it's no longer the same asset as it was prior to the sale, so you can do what you want with the money and disperse it differently.
That's great. So then that brings me to my next question, and we, I asked this question prior about investment, because if you have 1.5 million dollars, or if you have a million dollars, and you put it in an investment house, it's going to cost you more than $4,000 for a manager to invest and manage your money. At a million dollars, it's probably, if you, and it will probably cost more, because you don't have investments currently, so you don't have an existing house to invest with, you're going to have to go out and solicit and take proposals. So it could easily cost you $10,000 to pay someone to manage that. That doesn't seem like good financial management, at $10,000 or $9,000 a year to pay someone to manage your money when you're currently expending $4,000 in taxes and you're garnering a revenue.
Or spend a little more for, we have a forester program and everything.
Right, of which that money, I would guess, just like when I harvest here, that's paid from your harvest. So that's not taken from your general fund, that's not budgeted from your water, those are funds that are taken from that harvest and paid prior to that money is transferred as revenue into the water. So those are not funds that, that is not an expenditure that you are budgeting for currently.
No.
And again, this is another question that we had. Edward Jones, we had asked to be here. Are they coming today?
He's not coming.
He's not coming?
He has two other appointments, so we're not talking about the first one, so we're not talking about this one.
Well, I just wanted to address your question, because I did, and I'm not an investor by any means, but I did some investigations, basically tried to go, if you did invest the money, depending on the return, and that's the big thing, what's the return going to be? But even, even like a 2% return over 10 years, it's almost equivalent to what the timber would get us in 10 years.
But...
Based on what we've been told we make for the timber in a three-year period.
But is that factoring in what you're paying your manager to manage your...
Right, but that's minimal. I mean, if you're making like a million... I mean, if you're making like a million dollars, $10,000 isn't that much as far as paying them. But what I'm saying is if we looked...
But currently, you're expending four.
Right.
So if, so if the skills are pretty equal...
Right.
And the expenditure on one side is 10, and the expenditure on the other is four, it doesn't...
But that's what I'm saying. We need somebody here that does investments, because if the return is anything above that, then we're doubling our money in 10 years versus selling timber.
Right. But investments are a gamble, no different than...
And selling timber.
Absolutely.
So it's, that's why we need somebody that's an expert.
But I think the bottom line, the question goes back to, if the proposal hadn't come forward, would we be spending this much time? And is it the goal of the select board, if you sell this property, to take the money and reduce taxes, pay down the water bond, or simply take the money and invest it and hope that the investments garner what you think they will?
We, we're going to be looking into a lot of that stuff. We haven't done anything. We knew we were going to have this discussion tonight, and we're open, we haven't set our minds on any particular avenue at this time, and...
So this is three meetings in with the same questions.
Okay.
And I agree. I think it's, I'm tired of inviting people to our meetings that don't show up. And they're the ones that we're going to base our answers on. And it's frustrating, because it means something to us, you know, less than them, obviously. But like you said, you know, I don't want meeting after meeting after meeting, and we just keep going and keep going, asking questions and getting more information. It's like, we need the details of this kind of stuff before we can...
And I hope all future meetings about this will be held at a meeting like this. And that if they are held at a special meeting, they're worn properly.
Okay. I guess Mr. Mueb, or... Anybody else want to speak here before? Don't see any hands. Go ahead.
So I approached the podium and you with a great deal of fear and trepidation. When I first came, I thought I was bringing good news. I, reading the paper, I gather people felt pressured by my passing on and the way I presented it. I apologize to you if anyone felt what I said felt like pressure. I do think I want to clarify a couple things. Mr. Gerlach asked if there was any interest to sell the property and was told that certainly the select board was interested in trying to figure out what to do with this, and this was an economic decision, what made the best interest and what was in the best interest of the people of Proctor. And he was told that without an offer, there was no way for you to be able to talk about it until he presented an offer. So he was coming from it as, I want to do something that I think is going to be a good thing. We have had now, we went to the town of Chittin because somebody is claiming that this could be used for wind turbines. I mean, it could be used as a trash yard, too. It could be used for anything. But that's not what the plan is. It's in current use as you know what it is, so there's a huge consequence if anyone were to ever do anything other than keep it with a good management plan, keeping it in current use. It has to have a logging and a management plan to be able to qualify. So discussions about raping the forest and doing the kinds of things really are not quite anything like what's being proposed. So Mr. Gerlach has been aware that you folks wanted more time to consider it. He wants to get out of the limelight. Okay? He thought this was an economic decision that the town of Proctor was going to address, that this is the town of Proctor's assets. It's not the rest of Vermont's. It's your fiduciary duty to handle your assets and treat them appropriately as the voters might like or not like. And the only way to find out about it is for you to say, yes, we think this is a good idea, we accept an offer at a fair price, and if 5% of the people come out, we have to have a townwide vote for people to decide whether or not this is what is there. If nobody comes out, then you can go forward with the sale. We've been told that there's a right of first refusal on 50 acres to the Green Mountain Club that deals with the long trail. You could easily break this into two contracts. So everything but the 50 acres is covered in one track, and the 50 acres, if they don't buy it, then Mr. Gerlach would be willing to do it. We would love to have discussions to try to come up with what that is. But this kind of format, this kind of, how should I say, escalating things beyond what we think and what Mr. Gerlach thought he was getting in with, too, when he made an offer in response to, yes, please make a proposal to see if you would buy it so that you could, as the select board, make an economic decision based upon what you thought was in the best interest of the people in the community. Mr. Gerlach wants to get out of that approach. Mr. Gerlach doesn't like being under the kind of approach, the spreading his name in a way that's been negative, and the impact of what this has happened. So what I am told to do is to let you know that if we can't begin discussions with your attorney by the first of December, so we can actually come up with something that you could present if there were people and voters that were there, and you decide what you want to do, then he's going to withdraw his offer and go somewhere and do something else. He's not going to leave it out there so you can shop it someplace else, you can make other decisions. He doesn't want to be in this situation. He is prepared to buy it and close as soon as you can give him title and pay you cash of one and a half million dollars. If that's not something you want to do, just tell him it's not something you don't want to do. It is here to just simply say, this was supposed to be a transaction. It was supposed to be something that was positive. I didn't mean to pressure you in any way when I brought something forth, that he sort of felt it was solicited in a way that this was something that the town of Proctor would see as a positive thing, not as a negative thing. It's very sad when these kinds of things happen, and I think it has a negative impact on an awful lot that goes on in this state.
So Mr. Mueb, my, my only concern is I need to make an informed decision. And I have not yet gotten the answers that I've been asking for. So I, I have nothing against your client or anything, but I just need answers so I can decide how I'm going to vote.
And I totally understand that, that he's willing to extend this. If I pick up the telephone, and again, there's a big difference between when you're a select board for a town and when you're a private individual. A private individual could pick up the telephone and call an investment person that says, if I had a million and a half dollars, what would you forecast, using the way people forecast? And you can use bank and trust people. Lots of people handle investments and say, yeah, there are up and downs, but over a period of 20 or 30 years, here's what money growth is if you are investing it, and here's what you're going to spin off for your average income, and here's what your cost is to achieve it. And you can get it. You could go to the People's Bank, you could go to Community Bank, you could go to the Trust Department, which are very conservative people, not a local stockbroker, and say, if we invested the money with you, what is the return? You have, there are also public entities that are involved and can give you information about the cost and what they are. People give money to the foundations that produce all kinds of money, to fund conservation projects. I've been involved with lots of conservation projects, the buying of land, the buying of development rights. All of that exists out there, so you can get some good information on investments, which shouldn't take more than a week. At least as a person, if I were picking up the telephone, I could get you all those answers pretty quickly. I just look at it that way, and the way that this has continued. Mr. Gerlach has been seen in all kinds of ways because of the press, because of what's there, and a person that was trying to do what he thought was interest and would fit his long-term interest of what he would like to do with property and where he's current living and where he'd like to have a retirement place. And all I can say is, it's a tragedy to me to see what has happened out of an effort that was positive.
I have just to say, I agree with Ben as far as not having enough information, and I also feel like, as sweet a deal as he thinks it is, it's not like he's giving us 1.5 million dollars for an acre, and it's like, whoa, this is big. I mean, he's getting 1,600 acres of prime property. And I just, I have trouble not only with the information we've been shared, but the way the contract's been written, and I feel it's very one-sided.
We can change all the language of the contract.
Right. And the numbers. So I feel like it was kind of thrown together, like, hey, here's, here's the property, let's throw 1.5 million at them and, and go from there.
Well, I have only thing, I've been involved in large purchases of real estate that are logging, okay? Which is essentially what this is. This is timber. And going rates for places that are not accessible, this is not easily accessible property. It's not anything other than what it is, and even the logging is not that easy to be able, to be able to log 1,600 acres. There are many other places that are 1,600 acres that are easier to log, and your per acre price is materially less than what was offered to buy this. So, you know, it is what it is. It was offered to be a more than fair price. If you think it's worth more, just tell us you're not interested and we'll go away.
Thank you. Yes, Ray Al.
I wasn't going to say anything. I'm a Ray Al, citizen of this town for 40-plus years. I just want to point out that if the town, absent the Gerlach offer, had decided to take this property to market, the average marketing time for this type of property is measured in years, not months. My guess is that it would be on the market for somewhere between two and four years to attract a buyer. You could luck out and get someone stepping up to the table to go. So I just, that's one factor that I wanted you to take into consideration. The other thing is, you should consider having it appraised by a professional appraiser, and that's likely to cost in the vicinity of anywhere from $2,000 to $4,000.
Bill's going to appraise it in 2015 for 1.5. That's what the offer's based on.
And so you have that appraisal that's four years old. You might ask for an update. But I, I'm not prepared to render an opinion on. I haven't looked at it that close. I was out of town when this all started to transpire. But yeah, I'm not taking sides here or expressing an opinion of whether we should or shouldn't, but I do think you should be aware of those aspects from a market standpoint.
Thank you, Ray. Anyone else have any comments? Yes.
Hi, Alan.
Sure.
Just regarding price, I mean, one of the reasons that I think a sale agreement national forest is win-win for everybody is because it keeps it public land, it keeps it intact, and it's the value to the town of Proctor is fair market value is based on appraisal. And that appraisal will take into account any written offers that you have received for the land in the last couple of years. So that appraisal is going to know that you have been offered one and a half million, and that, you know, is, if that's a fair price and an open offer, then the appraisal is going to reflect that amount. So by selling the national forest in two to four years, you can both get the income as well as keeping it public.
Sure. Thank you. Yes?
I just have a statement, and that is that when you factor in your future revenue off of one or the other, either the investment money that you did or the land itself, the land itself always goes up in price. And years from now, it could be done, what it is now? We don't know. Land traditionally has gone up in price. So you want to factor that into whether it would be worth it.
So my comment is, when he spoke to current use, there's no guarantee that you, you have to pay a fee to be out of current use. There's no guarantee that the property can't be taken out of current use. He simply would have to pay a fee to do that. So when you speak to the fact that it's in current use, it'll remain in current use, I mean...
There's a, there's a huge fee.
Yeah, there's a huge fee. But if you're willing to pay 1.5 million dollars for the acreage, it's not unrealistic to think that a fee to take it out of current use is out of bounds. So I just, when you spoke to it, you made it appear as if it's in current use, it'll remain in current use without any objections, and that's not completely true.
Okay. I don't see anybody else on this subject, so... Anybody want to make any further things? But I think we need to sit down with, and, you know, move this along.
Yeah, we need Alan to answer the question about what the revenue could be used for, and we need at least someone, Edward Jones or whoever, to give us some information. If I have to make the call myself, I will, but those are important questions.
Yeah. Let's see what we can schedule for someone to come in this week or early next week.
Well, I don't think you even need us. I mean, at some point, I think you need to reach out to some, an investor and just say, here's, here's the numbers, do an analysis for us, and then...
If you...
More than one.
Yes. So I want to have a motion to have Stan make some two or three inquiries.
So moved, and let's try to get that information next week so that we can take a look at it well in advance of the meeting.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank, thank you. The review of our October 28th meeting minutes. Any additions, corrections?
I approve the minutes as written.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And our November 5th special select board minutes. Any additions, corrections?
Mister approved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Open public comment. Ray?
Do I ask over there?
Yes.
Yes, please.
I couldn't say anything, though. I'm probably the forest man here. I look at all that monkey there. Ah.
Induce yourself.
Huh?
Induce yourself.
Yes.
Oh, I may be it, from Proctor. And I think if you just sell it for what you want, after you get done investigating, if you get every bird lover and everybody else in the state of Vermont that wants a piece of it afterwards, that, the buyer is going to be, not going to buy it. Because this guy, from the way he thought... be, not going to buy it. Because this guy, from the way he thought, he, he wants it himself, not with other people. A million, $10, is it?
Million five.
Million five? I don't even know how much money that is. But I don't see, I can't see too many people in the pot if you sell it, because everybody's going to lose.
You say if we do sell it or if we don't sell it, Ray?
You sell it for what you can get.
Right.
But if you invite the bird watchers and everybody else in the state of Vermont that is involved with it, then it ain't going to work. Because this guy don't want anybody in it. The last guy that spoke. And you've got an offer here of a million and five, you either keep it or sell it, as it is. That's my feeling.
Thank you.
And I'm the poorest man in here.
Oh.
You sure?
Yes.
I just feel that way.
Yes. Gina?
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to speak to your point, and you might want to look at the minutes of the Chittenden Select Board meeting last night, when they get posted. I asked Mr. Mueb a few questions, including, so he said, well, you know, Mr. Gerlach just wants to, you know, own this property and take care of it, and, you know, be a steward. And I said, okay, well, that's great. Then that means, will he be willing to put some easements on it? And he said, no, no easements. Mr. Gerlach's very private. He doesn't, he's not going to want other people on the land. So that, just to your...
Did you directly ask him about wind turbines?
Um, no, but we directly asked him whether or not, Gary Congdon, who's the, the chair, asked him if he was, had any plans to develop the land, and he said, no current plans. And we asked, well, does that mean no plans in the future? And he said, no current plans. So that's, that's what we got.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Bob, any comments?
My name is Bob Curtis. When I first got wind of the sale for 1.5, my first impression was, take the money and run. But then, as I got thinking about it, you still can get probably 1.5. And I agree with the lady from Chittenden and the lady from, where was she, from the Green Mountain?
Trust Republic Land.
I would go that route to sell the land. You can sell it to whoever you want. You're going to end up probably with the same money. And I think she said it might take two to four years. Well, then I'd knock on Chittenden's door and say, how about, how about give up those taxes of $4,000? We're going to play ball with you.
You're a smart man. Gosh.
You know, I mean, but I, I don't think I'd sell it to that individual.
Compared to ours, I pay more taxes on an acre of land than I do 1,600 acres of land.
Come on.
No, I'm just, I'm just speaking out loud.
Well, that's what your mic is for.
But that's a bargain. Chittenden has a bargain for taxes. 1,600 of, 1,600 acres, $1,000.
Can, here is, Dan.
One more thing on the investment. If you invest 1.5, you're going to be able to take 60,000 a year. And at the end of 30 years, you're going to have 1.7. I can tell you where.
To respond to your idea, which really is quite brilliant. But it, but it, but as far as I know, it's a state program, and I don't think that we would be able to do that, nor do I think that, it would, it would be an awfully tough sell. I mean, you can imagine that sell here, so, but it's free.
If I have any comments, more comments, Dan?
Denise.
Denise, rather. Don't mind me. Excuse me.
I just wish.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Chittenden watershed, anything we've got to, I think everything is, you're going to...
I think what you, is to, what do you do with the, how much can you earn from the 1.5 million? An investment plan, investment policy.
And what we can do with it, and...
Where do the funds go?
Yeah, where do the funds go? There's some questions for Alan there, and there's questions for investors.
Yeah. I think, you know, what, what you can do with it, I think, is up to the board suggesting to the voters, so that you've got a firm stand on it. And you would be setting up a, if you invested it, you'd be setting up a fund to put it into, and then how you spend the fund. And that would be the restriction on setting up the fund.
You were also at a prior meeting where you had an assessment from him about the timber harvesting, what that looked like 15 years out. So that, that's never been provided by the, accurately you said at a prior reading, you had spoken to him and asked him about it.
Yeah, essentially, my last conversation with him was, the million and a half where the timber is standing there right now. We've got two logging contracts coming up.
Two parcels, yeah.
And one of them will need to have a road, well, a road built in order to do either one of them. But he estimated the next contract would be around 300,000. It's going to cost you 100,000 to build the road. So presumably, you get 200,000 less his commission off that, which is 20%. And then within another three or four years after this one, there would be another harvest of 300,000, which wouldn't have, which the road would already be built. So I don't have those dollars right now. I'm looking at somewhere between 500,000 over the next 10 years from timber sales.
Right, because I think we talked, I remember you talking about it, because I was thinking it was like a 1.2 million that we'd have in 10 years, 10 years, 12 years, but now with all these deductions.
Yeah. But you've got to take money out of it in order to do it.
So our next meeting is on the 25th. Six days from that day, this man's going to want a decision.
You've already, you've made a decision by not making a decision.
But he's going to withdraw his offer.
Right, he's withdrawing his offer on the 1st, so...
We need all this information next week so that we can make a decision, either to proceed or not at our next meeting.
Yes, we have to make a decision on, at the next meeting, what we're doing.